Order from recess. Welcome, everyone. We will go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. So please rise. Flag is behind everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you again for coming tonight. Our program, RDU, every December, we do our truth in taxation hearing. And I'll be led by our business manager, Mary Reader.
And you wanted it in PowerPoint, right?
Yeah. Hello, my name is Mary Reader. I'm the business manager for Delano Public Schools. And welcome to our truth in taxation hearing for the 22 pay 23 levy. Our agenda for tonight is the levy certification recommendation, the 22 pay 23 levy analysis, the 21-22 budget and 22-23 budget summaries. And then I'll take questions at the end. The first page we're looking at is what was certified last year in December. And the total for that levy was $9.999, 510,095 cents. This year, for the December certification, it'll be $10,664,618.30. The original levy that was proposed at the max level by the board at the September meeting was $9,154,116. The difference for this increased amount for the December final levy was that question one of 604.46 was passed by the voters in November, as well as there was a negative $13,058.99 negative adjustment that had been on the original levy for FY '21 school age childcare. MDE had that in error, and there shouldn't have been a negative adjustment. So that increased the levy by that $13,000 as well. So last year, our expiring levy was $374.88. What was approved in question one this year was 604.46, and that was passed by the voters in November. The average, state average, still is around $874 per student. So we're still a little under state average. And that 604.46, it's higher than the year before just because there was inflation built in on year one. So we knew that would be a little higher, plus $200. Then when we look at the different categories within the voter-approved tax levies, the first part is the referendum. So you see the increase there for the question one that was passed. Plus, our student count was increased by about 26 students over what we used last year as the estimate for last year's levy. The referendum adjustment, we always estimate pupil units. So what we budgeted, what we estimated last year for this current year was lower than what it actually is. So that's where that positive adjustment comes in of about a little under $70,000. The voter-approved debt service increased by a little over $3,000. And that's just because the net anticipated net tax capacity of this district continues to grow, which means that we don't qualify for debt service aid equalization funds. So everything is levy at this point. The debt excess adjustment, we have to keep 105% in our Fund VII fund balance to cover all interest and principal payments for our bonds. That number gets adjusted each year when the state looks at what our Fund VII balance is. And they always do a negative adjustment. It fluctuates a little bit each year. And then the debt abatement adjustment is for, we're allowed to levy for taxes that are abated by our residents. So that goes up and down just depending on what is abated each year. So this year, it's a little more than what it was last year. Other debt service, same thing. That is for our alt facility bonds. And they went up just a tad bit. But again, it's because we don't qualify for debt equalization aid. And the debt excess adjustment was a little less than last year just because they look at what our Fund VII balance is. And we have to keep 105% in there. This is all of the other general local tax levies. These are not voter-approved. These are put in place by the legislature. So local optional increased a little over $35,000. And that's because the pupil units this year were higher than what we used last year. Plus, the state aid equalization factor went from 81% last year to 89% this year, which means that more is being covered by levy than by aid. The board-approved referendum, that went away when the legislature turned everything into local optional back about four or five years ago. So last year was the last year we had any kind of adjustments for that. So you won't see that going forward anymore. Equity decreased by a little over $37,000. That's because with the passage of the new operating referendum, our gap between other rural districts and ourselves has now decreased because we have a higher operating referendum in place. So the equity then goes down a tad bit. Operating capital, that went up a little bit, partly due to students, the 26 extra students over what was last year. Plus, the levy portion went from 34% up to 35% this year just because of our anticipated net tax capacity has continued to grow. LTFM, or long-term facilities maintenance, increased by 9,200. And that's due to the increased number of pupil units for this year's levy. Building land lease decreased by a little over $12,000. And that's due to not having to pay for golf and baseball leases in the 1920s school year because of COVID shut all the spring sports down. Plus, hockey got shortened up a little bit, too. So we paid less in hockey ice time at that time as well. Career technical, that increased by quite a bit as well, by another $12,000. And that is because in the past, there was a state aid ratio where the state was covering, you know, levy was 84%. Now the levy is 99.8%. So there's very little aid coming in on the career tech. It's all being covered by levy. So career tech would be Rite Tech Center programs that we pay for, as well as we used to have a career, the JOFIN industrial tech programs are also covered under career tech. Reemployment, that actually is a decrease of $120,000. Back in FY '20, we budgeted for the amount that we were being charged for unemployment tax. Well, two years later, the state came back and said, "We're going to cover all of that." And so we now have a great big negative adjustment because we didn't need those funds. So they're taking them back. Q comp increased about $24,000. Last year, there had been a large negative adjustment just due to student pupil units. We had estimated higher than what they actually were. So that's why there, this year, there wasn't that large negative adjustment. So that's why it's a positive. No TIF adjustments for last year or this year. The abatement adjustment again comes into play because we're allowed to levy for taxes that are abated for district residents. And other post-employment benefits decreased $8,700. We had one employee that had retiree health built into her contract. And the person that replaced her did not have that built into her contract. So this was, her $50,000 was used up in August of '21. So we shouldn't see that moving forward. This should be the last year we see that on the levy.
Just to go back, the third from the bottom, the TIF adjustment, that's in about, I believe it's now going to be six years when in the new industrial park, they had, when the pet food toughies came in, that's about, they have an adjusted where they're not taxed on their property for nine years. So the TIF in place was negotiated between the city and the company. So any additional property out there will be adjusted in about six to seven years. You'll see an adjustment show up here.
And then we come to community service. The community agenda, the youth service and after-school, that increased by about $1,600. And that was because the district's population increased by 238 residents. And that increase was, the state demographer gives us what our population is each year based on their estimates. So we go with that. The school age childcare increased by 30,000. And that's due to the cost of providing before and after-school childcare for special ed students. We're seeing that increase over the last couple of years. So we're budgeting for what we're looking at spending each year. ECFE and home visiting, that went up by a total of a little over $2,300. And that's because 20 more students were reported in the under-five-years-of-age category, which is how that funding is determined. Then we will look at budgets. So we're going to look at our FY '22 actual budget first. And this is what was presented by the auditors at the November board meeting. So in the 21-22 school year, the general fund unassigned fund balance decreased by almost $1.2 million due to the district needing to continue to make budget reductions and using the unassigned fund balance to help alleviate more reductions. And in total, the general fund balance decreased by a little under $775,000, which was less than the decrease in the unassigned fund balance. But that's because both capital and long-term facilities maintenance are considered under general fund. And we didn't spend all the money on projects and purchasing of capital items. Some of that got moved into FY '23. Food service increased their fund balance by almost $378,500. And that was due to the government allowing districts to participate in the seamless summer option for food service, which allowed every student in the district to receive one free lunch and breakfast each day. And then the reimbursement rate by the federal government for those meals was much higher than what the district would be charging families for those same meals. So we saw a nice increase for that fund balance. Community service saw a fund balance increase of almost $80,000. And that's due to operations returning to normal after two years of COVID negative impacts. Debt service increased by $7,800. And that's, that fluctuates each year. And that's just based on how much the state pulls back from us each year. Our, we've got our bond schedules out there. And then the other debt service costs, those are pretty static. They're what we pay our financial advisor sellers for doing our bond disclosures and things of that nature. And then the FY '23 budget summary. The general fund unassigned balance is expected to decrease by a little over $978,000. We're in our fourth year of making budget reductions. And the district is spending down the unassigned fund balance to offset more reduction, drastic reduction. So this was a planned spend down again. Overall, the general fund, which includes capital and long-term facilities maintenance, is anticipated to decrease by $2.1 million, which includes some LTFM projects and some capital equipment purchases as well. And at this time, food service is going to, we're expecting that fund balance to decrease by almost $99,000. And that's due to, we are no longer in the seamless summer option for food service. So we're back to the normal part where people have to pay for, if they're not free and reduced, pay for the regular lunches and breakfast. And so the reimbursement rate from the families is lower than what we were getting from the feds. Plus, the cost of food has increased substantially. So we are still expecting a decrease in that fund balance. But they have a very healthy fund balance, so this is, it's okay. Community service, we're going to increase their overall fund balance by about $4,400. And programs are continuing to run as normal. The debt service fund will increase about a little over $33,000 due to lower bond and interest payments in FY '23. But again, the state will monitor that and pull back stuff as needed or funds as needed to keep us at the 105%. And that's about it. Any questions? Questions? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Merry Christmas, everybody. And Lisa and Jenny, thank you very much for your service.
All right. That concludes our truth in taxation meeting. Is there anybody here, public, right? No public comment, questions for truth in taxation? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move into our sixth item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. So obviously, the consent agenda is linked. That includes the school board minutes from the November meeting, all of the financial affairs documents. So if you're interested in our current budget, investment transactions, and several other financial documents, those are there for you to take a peek at. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Jenny will make that motion. Thank you, Jenny. Is there a second? Second by Jim. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is passed. Next, we have our resolution for acceptance of gifts. Whereas Joe and Robin Wright donated $500 for overdrawn school meal accounts. Loretto Lions Club donated $650 for Delano Intermediate School fitness t-shirts. American Online Giving donated $291.30 for Delano High School. Community Charities of Minnesota donated $1,000 for the Best Buddies program. Music Boosters, $55 for concert choir fees. MSH, wait, MSHSL, whoa, why couldn't I read? Foundation, $1,051 for free and reduced activity fees. Core Trust Bank donated $1,500 for scoreboard sponsorship. Basketball Booster Club, $5,953.75 for the girls' basketball booster paid coaches. Delano Tiger Activity Booster Club donated $5,649 for booster paid dance coaches and $1,623.75 for the assistant girls' hockey booster coach. The Tennis Booster Club, $1,368.11 for reimbursement for girls' tennis clothes. General Mills Match for Lynette Cramp. $1,000 for Art Club. And Highlands Church, $250 or $250 for the Compass Program. All of these generous donations were donated to the Delano Public School districts with the conditions I noted above. That's an amazing amount of donations. That is incredible. That is a testament to our community. So I thank everybody who gave some donations. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Who moved? Lisa? Thank you, Lisa.
Second.
And second advice, who? Again, any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, we will move into a roll call vote.
Mr. Black.
Aye.
Ms. Roser.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Segwin.
Aye.
Mr. Girkey.
Aye.
Ms. Roser.
Aye.
All right. That resolution is passed. Personnel matters are noted or attached to the agenda today. I don't believe there are any retirements or masters to signify. Can't pull it up.
Nope.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve personnel.
Jenny will make that motion.
Thank you, Jenny. Is there a second? Is that here, Jim?
Jim, second.
Seconded by Jim. Any questions, comments, or concerns there? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is approved. Next, we will move into public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. And while the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, please note, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to give public comment? Anyone here that would like to give public comment? Last call. Anyone here for public comment? All right. Seeing no one is here to give public comment, we will move right into administrative reports, starting with Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen on the board. I'll be briefed this evening. Just three brief topics to cover with you. First of all, the entire board is fully aware that the Office of Civil Rights Division and the federal government, the Department of Education, there was a complaint that was filed against the district last spring. The district has responded to that complaint. The Office of Civil Rights has decided to investigate further that complaint, which involved surveys of students and surveys of coaches and advisors of all of the activities. I just would like to state that, as I stated in my communication to you last week, I believe this complaint does not have any merit. It is baseless. We responded that way. More importantly than my opinion on this is our legal counsel shares the same opinion. It does not have merit. I am welcoming a further investigation to look at our facilities access based on, of our facilities based on gender. More than willing to cooperate in every way, shape, or form. We do have members that will be doing a site visit next month. And I look forward to the process. So I just wanted to make sure I made that comment as this is, now that we've reached out to our students and we've reached out to our staff as well to gain data for OCR to complete their investigation. So the other brief thing is we are in the process of refinalizing our budget. For, as Mary had shared, we have made some adjustments based on forecasted state funding formula. And with pupil adjustments, there has been a little bit of a slight change. I will be convening the administrator, or the finance committee of the board once we finish up some work at the task force level. And just preliminary, it's a little bit better news. It's a little bit of a softer land than we anticipated. Not by a lot, but every little bit counts. And so there's some adjustments that we needed to do based on what we didn't know back in August. And we adjust our budget all the time that way. This time, it kind of helped us adjust in a little bit better. So there, we might not be looking at a full $360,000 of reductions. And then we have some other options that we can look at, too, as well. More to come in the near future. Over the next couple of months, you'll be fully up to date and informed. This process, as you know, every year culminates in the board approving next school year's budget. And last but not least, I would like to recognize formally two of our school board members that are going to be leaving the board. This is their last meeting. I've kidded with some that you don't officially not become a board member until our new board members are sworn in. So hopefully, there won't be any necessary board business that's needed between now and the 9th of January. But it has been tradition in this district for a long time for me to present a bell of service. And it marks the years of service. Jenny, I can tell you that working with you as a member of the board has been absolutely fantastic. The perspective that you brought to the board in helping me in working with my work and you as a board member has been fantastic. And I would like to present you with this board. And also, I'd like to present Lisa Segwin. Lisa's been a longtime serving board member. Much against my objections, she decided not to run for another term. But given when I looked at the years of service, 2009 to 2022, okay, you've done your time. It's okay. And again, I want to thank you for your leadership and your role on the board over these. You've been on the board ever since I've been superintendent. And I appreciate all of the commitment that you've made over these years. Thank you very much. That concludes my report for this evening.
All right. We will move into our principals' reports. We will start with our Delano Intermediate Principal, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening on behalf of the intermediate school. I just wanted to start by acknowledging this evening our band and choir concerts. I came from our band concert just before I came here. And Greg attended the choir concert last week. And I just want to acknowledge Mike Daly and Sandy Meyerson. They do a wonderful job with our kids. I mean, our fifth graders hadn't picked up an instrument four months ago. And, you know, they put on a wonderful concert. So I want to acknowledge them and all the hard work that went into that. And also our teachers who walk back and forth from our school to the high school for practices. It's kind of a team effort. So. Our theme for the month of December was respect. Our tiger time focused on understanding feelings of others and those sorts of things. But if I'm honest, most of it was spent decorating our doors. If you saw some pictures online, it's become a tradition, which is one of the things that we're looking for as a new building. And so we did our second annual door decorating contest. It was a lot of fun. Teachers get into it. The kids get into it. So our student council put that on. The last piece I want to share with you is just a brief update. We completed our second universal screening window in FAST, which basically is just a screener to see if our kids are on track, either low risk or college pathway. We do it three times a year. We do it in early December so that we can review the results in December and make adjustments come January. So really quickly, in the fall, when we took our math FAST, 83.9% of our students were low risk or college pathway. In the winter, it was 83.6. So about three tenths of a decrease, which, you know, any decrease kind of works me a little bit. But for the most part, that's a good place for us to be right now at this point in the year. For reading, our fall score was 86.1%. Low risk or college pathway in the winter was 84.1%. So a change of about negative 2%. So what we do with that information is, this last Friday, our SST team does a day-to-day. They go through every single student who didn't meet those standards and talk about the intervention they're in, what adjustments we need to make. And it's just a really productive conversation that Mr. Hinker leads our team through. And then on Wednesday, at our two-hour early release, our teacher teams will also look through their individual data and make recommendations for any intervention adjustments. So overall, still really doing just fine at the intermediate school. And I have a lot of faith in our teachers and our interventionists. With that, it will open up to comments and questions. That's what's happening at the intermediate school.
Yours look gorgeous.
They're so fun. The kids do a great job. Yeah. And the teachers. I'll be honest. A little bit of teacher effort in there. So, thank you.
Enjoy your break.
Thank you.
Next up, we will move to our secondary education, our high school principal, Mr. Voight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. I have three relatively quick announcements. Most of you are probably aware that we, as a district, have partnered with the Center for Effective School Operations, CISO. And they are helping us get a better understanding of the school climate and going to set new directions. So we did complete our student surveys on the 14th of December. And then Wednesday, the 21st, we'll be doing staff and student focus groups. So we've already notified those students, invited those students to participate. I'm pleased to say that I think all that we've invited have agreed to participate. And so CISO, that group, our partners, will then be aggregating all the information from the surveys and the focus groups and then helping us to establish a facilitated community engagement conversation, which I would encourage everyone to keep an eye out for more information because that's expected to be January 30th. But more information will come with that. Also, with respect to our MTSS district initiative, our district-wide cohort has been working diligently over this fall to provide some better parameters and a better understanding of that process. And we at the high school have sort of taken a step back from our SST, the Student Success Team process, to allow that to take shape. And I'm pleased to report that we will be kind of officially restructuring and kicking off our SST process at the high school on January 31st. So I look forward to giving you updates on how that process unfolds. And then lastly, is actually an announcement that I meant to do last week, but for whatever reason neglected. And this actually was inspired by Mr. Shane. During our leadership team meeting, he has us kind of brainstorm on something that we're positive about over the past month or what, and things that we're also looking forward to. And I just have to say that as I, excuse me, as I walk back and forth through the office, the, just the investment that our staff have shown in working with individuals, you know, just whatever struggles they might be facing, however we can support them. I see this on a daily basis with our counselors, our assistant principals, our nurses, the social worker. They really just bring these people in, work with their parents to better understand the needs of our students. And then also, of course, communicating out to the whole staff. And the whole staff has just been very open and welcoming and flexible to meet the needs of our kids. So I just wanted to put a plug in for them to appreciate them this month and say that their efforts are admirable. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the high school.
I was curious how you selected which students would be interviewed for CISO or?
Yeah. So that's a good question. So we actually did some internal brainstorming in the office, just some individuals that we thought would be comfortable, you know, kind of speaking on these topics in a group, trying to keep it balanced as much as possible, however one might define that. We also, in a We also, in a staff meeting, just recommended that any staff that has suggestions for students that would be willing to participate and able to kind of fit that, fit that role, then give us those names. And so that's how I came up with those students. The student focus group is really expected between 15 to 20 people, and we split up the staff groups. There's two staff groups, and so there's kind of a 7th through 9th grade staff group and a 10th through 12th grade staff group, and those are about 12 to 15 people.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's a good cross-section of students and it's not just all our, you know, honor roll students or whatever. So it sounds like we probably had some good inputs.
Yeah, it was our attempt to get us balanced.
Yeah.
Obviously, different people's perspectives on what balanced means, but trying to get people that were involved in different activities, not everybody, you know, from the same peer group, if you will. So we tried to be cognizant of soliciting as wide of contributions as we could.
Awesome. If a student had wanted to do it, could they ask to be included in the focus group or they had to be invited?
They could, but it probably wasn't really well advertised that this is an opportunity and, you know, anybody that wants to. We really kind of led with the invitations. And then we had a selection of alternates, let's say, if you will. So if students that were invited decided not to participate, we had sort of a backup plan, if you will.
Sure. We'll look forward to hearing the results. All right. Thank you, Mr. Voight. Happy you have a much-needed break as well. And last but not least, our elementary school principal, Ms. Schultz. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the elementary school. Short update for you today, an instructional side of things. We are meeting on Wednesday as a staff to kind of review our progress monitoring plans for our students, which will hopefully give us kind of a predictor of how we'll kind of move and progress on our winter FAST testing. That will start January 9th. And then shout out to Jenny Schulke. She's going to be coming over and helping our kindergarten and first grade teachers administer the early reading and early math assessments. Those are done one-on-one between students and staff, so those are pretty time-intensive. So she has some flexibility and is offered to administer some of those. We are grateful for that help. And then initially, we'll make some of those adjustments to our tiger time intervention groups right away, and then that February late start, we'll have some time as a staff to reevaluate our in-class intervention groups, and teachers will dig deep into that data to see how we can respond and support our students. Our January PD Day is set to be sort of a mini-conference within the district. We have a lot of teacher leaders that have stepped up to run a course or teach or facilitate a session, and then staff is able to have some choice within that to kind of go with what is of interest or where they want to stretch themselves. So we're looking forward to that day. Happy to report that all 10 of our Kids Hope mentors are now matched with a student in our building, so we are excited for all of them to get started and have that one-on-one time. I just met with Lana from Kids Hope, and she reported that a mentor said to her, one of the students said, "Are you here just for me?" So you can see that there's that need and that just mutual enjoyment between the mentor and mentees starting to unfold, so that's exciting to see. And we sent out our kindergarten survey a few weeks ago, so we've received 135 responses. We haven't gone into that data yet to see where we're at numbers-wise, but that went out, and we have a good amount of people responding, so that's good. They're seeing that. And then we have our sing-along and our read-a-thon on Wednesday. We're looking forward to that. That has not been in-person altogether in the media center for a few years now, so we're excited to come together and enjoy some of the holidays. Our third graders are going to be singing, so Ms. Stake and Ms. Koots have done a nice job there. We did find someone to be the long-term sub for Ms. Stake. We are now short one more para, but that's okay. We're doing okay, better than we were at the beginning of the year. I know. But that concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Enjoy your break. I'm sure we will all hear in Delano the sing-along. It could rival the noise in the US Bank Stadium.
It should be great. Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. They're amped at a 10.
Moving on. Do you have a report from Mary Reader?
No. Mary Reader's report, she went directly back home, but it would have been
Same thing.
Same thing as the truth and taxation information.
In that case, moving on to Community Ed and Activities Director, Eric.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here to talk about Community Ed and activities. I have, I brought three stats with today. We've talked a lot about a number of our other programs, and it's kind of timely with Mary presenting truth and taxation, where she kind of showed the recovery of Community Ed. And I brought three different stats today to talk about that as well, as we kind of dove into both our recreation enrichment activities, really looking at where we're going to finish. And I did a calendar year because it's a little bit more timely. So we looked at total number registrations for calendar year-to-date, so all of 2022. And we're sitting at a 44% increase from where we were at our peak in 2019. So a nice recovery. The chart kind of shows the same thing as where we were in 2019, that dip in 20 and 21 as we come through COVID, and then kind of where our registration numbers are at now. And again, as you see from the amount of aid we get, it makes up about 10% or less of our budgets, so the majority of our budget is based off of user fees on what we do. And then the other piece that we wanted to take a look at is as we have implemented new technology and has, as our world has shifted, so has how we accept registrations. And where we sit right now is about 91% of our registrations are completely done online, and that is, that's a trend that has been shifting. It has really peaked up the last couple of years. So back in 2019, we're closer to about 75%. We're at 91% now on how those, how our registrations are handled and how they come in. And then the third piece is, you know, I know I've brought it up as far as our big marketing piece when it comes to that print brochure. This year was a perfect example because our print brochure is not out yet. It got delivered to the post office today. However, we opened up our registration a week ago. So I just took a look at where, what we collected in one week this year by only having electronic media out versus a year ago. And in that same seven-day time span, last year with both print and electronic media, we handled 421 registrations in the first week. This year with just electronic media, we handled 512 registrations. So as we look for information about how we handle our marketing moving forward, these are just pieces that we're trying to pull together to give us a good look at how people are finding us, how they're choosing to register, and how effective we are as far as getting the work out on what we do. So those are just, yeah, three numbers I wanted to share with you. And then finally, on the activity side, I'd like to recognize both John Otto and Bella Molliter, that they've been selected as the AAA Award winners for Delano this year. So we had a nice, strong group of really impressive students that excel in all three areas, and through our committee, those were the two that were selected to move on to regional competition. So any questions regarding the new activities?
Just a real question about that data you just kind of rattled off. So was your hypothesis before that data that the print brochure was driving registrations?
I have to separate my personal opinion on this.
It's hard.
Yes, it's hard. No, I mean, I think the brochure has been something from the beginning of time for Community Ed that has been this core staple. My argument, my challenge to our coordinators is that we have to look at this. So my hypothesis is that, that things have changed and people are finding us in different ways. So then, do we look at that brochure as a piece that drives registration, or do we look at it as a piece that helps us just promote who we are and what we do? And I think it's designed right now to drive registration because it's very class-oriented, full descriptions versus a piece that kind of promotes what Community Ed does or promotes what the district does. And I think we just have to be cognizant of where things maybe are shipping and how we could use that print media piece to maybe market us different versus thinking that it's the end-all, be-all when it comes to collecting registrations.
It's like the Sears catalog. It would come, and I'd want to pick something for Christmas, right? Doesn't come anymore, but my kids still get Christmas presents. Is this an accurate statement?
I thought you were going to say you still wait for it.
Yes.
Sears doesn't even exist anymore.
We should talk about Sears. Hope you're not buying anything from Sears.
I don't even think, oh, best buy, sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying I don't think Sears really exists. Anyway, it'd be interesting to test like a really nice postcard or something a little bit cheaper than the actual cost that it takes to do the catalog to see if your hypothesis holds true.
With the QR code to go to the website, right?
Well, yes, and that's, we talked about that as a group, is the idea is where do we want to drive people to go to? So we want to centralize where we're putting all of our information and then keep driving them there with the use of QR codes and other ways to, you know, the cost of that publication, it's, you know, depending on how many we distribute, but it's somewhere between $12,000 to $15,000 per year to produce three of those brochures. So if it's not used as an effective way to drive an increase in registration, then, I'm not saying we eliminate print media, but then we maybe repurpose the use of print media on how we can promote our programs, promote our district, promote our community on a different level, so.
Knowing that it does still exist, and I agree with you on many of the points, but knowing that it still exists and it's going out, are there any deadlines that will be missed due to the delay in getting the hard copy brochure that people may, that we may have to make concessions for?
So in lieu of what we've done with that brochure not getting out, we promoted it district-wide. Any, any registration deadlines? I'm trying to think of like programs that fill up right away, like gymnastics is a common one. Typically, we push that deadline or that registration opening out further than the initial opening of all the other registrations. So then there is that buffer, so most likely any of those things, the print media will be out as well
Okay.
to accommodate for that.
Perfect.
So.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. We get on to student board reports.
Yeah, so I, like I said, I got to visit the intermediate, and I know that I was talking about FAST, and maybe it didn't turn out exactly how they were initially hoping, but I do think it is a testament to how hard all of these teachers and these people are working, because even though maybe kids didn't perform as well, they still felt prepared for it and they felt ready, and I know that they're working really hard to make sure those kids who do need the extra help are going to get it. So that's obviously really impressive and just a good testament to, to our schools. And then, like I said, they have some fun projects going on. History Day for Advanced Language Arts in 6th grade is always a popular one. They're making their websites, their documentaries. I know I did that, and that was always a highlight of my language arts. They had their band concert, which sounded really fun, and did all their fun holiday activities, and I think kids are enjoying school but ready to go on holiday break and recharge a little bit.
Yeah. And then I went up to the elementary school today with Lila, and it was, it was a pretty small month again, just holiday helpers has kicked off and gifts from the community was, it sounded like it was a huge hit. It was all over the cafeteria tables, it filled almost everyone. The all-school sing-alongs happening on Wednesday for students, and the school is starting to go into their Christmas ease, and we kind of took, we interviewed some third graders today, and they were, they were definitely jumpy, so they're ready to go home for break. But students, they didn't, they did, they exactly didn't, which a lot of students obviously don't like tests, but it just kind of worried me because students dislike FAST testing, which is kind of like what we, we base a lot of stuff off, like FAST testing and how the results are going and everything else. So that was definitely a worrying thing. And then something else that is different this month was I interviewed a lot of high school students today, actually, because I wanted to like kind of get intake from them, because our board, our things hasn't, we haven't really focused on that that much. And students showed really big positivity in the fact that teachers are very helpful and they're putting hours of time into after the school day, but I heard a lot of negative feedback on regards to the retake policy from staff too, and a school-wide cellphone ban. And yeah, but overall, it was a really positive month, I think, and students are obviously ready to go home for break for a few weeks.
All right. Any questions for our board? All right. Moving on to board reports, Masiko.
I attended the November Masiko meeting. The minutes are linked. You can read through its pre-standard meeting. One of the things I'm going to ask Masiko to do differently going forward is, is attach the build, the site, the program site coordinator, so probably similar to principals, if you will, have been starting to provide a report as well that's linked in our agenda but doesn't transfer over to the minutes. So I'm going to ask them to do that, because there are some nice little nuggets around each program, whether it's Village Ranch or Journeys or some of the other programs to just give a flavor for what's happening throughout Masiko. So anyways, I'll make that change, ask to see if we can do that for next month, so. But otherwise, meeting minutes are linked there for your reading pleasure.
Any questions for Amy? All right, moving on to right tech center.
Same, the minutes are linked, but I'll hit on a couple. We approved a, going forward, a Habitat for Humanity build. Typically, the, there's a construction program and they build a small house, and moving forward, they're going to link with this Habitat for Humanity to donate a house. So that's pretty cool. They're going to add a program at no cost, a heavy equipment operation program, and it's basically being funded by local unions and local businesses and whatnot, so that's really cool. And not cool, we had to approve recommendations for reductions as everyone's having to make reductions, so. But the minutes are there to read. Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? Activities Advisory Committee meeting.
So I sat in for Jenny on this, and we talked about three things. Eric already mentioned the AAA awards. Co-op agreements policy, I guess to state it briefly, it could use a little tightening up. There were some questions around getting into them and more importantly, getting out of them, so I thought that was a pretty good catch by Eric. And then also the lettering policy, not in our core activities, but where we do a little bit one-offish type arrangements, like with the Nordic skiing and the downhill skiing, and some parents are asking if their kids can letter in equestrian stuff, and that's not really affiliated with black and orange, right? It's just kids getting into activities in other communities, so we discussed that a little bit, and that was about it. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on those two things.
Okay. Any questions for Cory on that? All right. Safe Schools, I attended that with Mr. Shane. Couple of things we covered was a lot of the community services that are available to our community and members in general, as well as to the school. And then we also covered social media and just kind of the way the kids in some communities are more willing to talk to their parents about what shows up on social media and how you promote that versus, in our community specifically, how long it took for social media posts to get back to our parents and get reported to the school, and how do we encourage our students to do that quickly, having those conversations with your kids. Outside of that, it was just pretty standard meeting. Anything you'd like to add?
No.
All right. And then, anybody has any questions? And then Schools for Equity and Education, worked out really well. They had that meeting just after all of the committee assignments had been done, and so they had the new heads for Ed Finance, which is Senator Yuakim. She talked about funding schools especially for special education. They had Senator Steve Kadozinski. His last name is hard to say. He is the new E-12 Finance Chair in the Senate, or, and said, sorry, he moved from E-12 Finance to Senate Ed Policy Chair, so he's moving over. He talked about his priorities being leveling out education funding and stabilizing it so that schools know what their funding will be and indexing it to inflation. And then they had Senator Mary Kunesh, who is also in the Ed Committees, but she talked about funding full buildings. She wanted to fund lunches, snacks, breakfast fully. She kind of talked about what her vision is. She's a former Media Center specialist. And then they also had a House Education Chair. I can't think of her name off the top of my head. I almost wrote it down, and I thought I'd remember it. Was it Hortman?
Yeah, I'd have to look back, but it should be, all the C general meetings are recorded in.
I can't think of her name off the top of my head. I almost wrote it down and I thought I'd remember it. Uh, is it Hortman?
Yeah, I'd have to look back, but it should be, obviously, general meetings are recorded and-
They're recorded, yeah. It's Melissa Hortman, I think, is who it is. And she, she took questions for quite a bit, and then, um, they moved on to their general business portion. Um, but they talked about funding and using, um, the stable funding for education and that non-renewable funding really wasn't education funding because that resources won't be there in the future and what that looks like going forward. Anything you'd like to add? You were also on those meetings.
Yeah, I was, I attended virtually as well. A lot of questions, uh, that came, there was some good questions that, from people that were on-site. Um, wanted to make sure that those leaders knew about the special ed cross-subsidy. Um, uh, I can tell you that, um, Massa's platform is five percent on the funding formula for each year as we come into this next session. Um, they talked about the equalization, uh, or the formula being adjusted for inflation. Um, and those are really good topics that, uh, those leaders need to hear as they, uh, are looking at a seventeen, a little over seventeen billion dollar, uh, reserve. We know that's one-time money supposedly, but how can you make it, make an impact on many programs, so.
Hopefully, we'll see something in that one-time money that becomes some permanent money in education because there will be some of that that's repeatable going forward. Any questions there? That's good because they didn't really have a lot of answers, so. All right, moving on to old business. Um, first up is approve the second read of policy four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse due to substantive and legal reference changes. Um, we talked about it last meeting, and in the work session, do I have a motion to approve the second read of policy four fourteen?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Amy, second by Cory. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, and then, next up is approve the second read of policy four fifteen, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults due to substantive and legal reference changes. We also discussed that in the last work session. Do I have a motion to approve policy four fifteen? Motion by Jim. Do I have a second? Deppel second it. Uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, uh, first is to certify the twenty-twenty-two pay twenty-twenty-three final property tax levy. Um, I believe that was discussed while I wasn't here, uh, with Ms. Reader. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two pay twenty-twenty-three final property?
What's the motion?
Motion by Cory. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Lisa. I heard her first. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approve resolution designating polling places for the twenty-twenty-three calendar year. That was discussed in work session. Do I have a motion to approve the cap, polling places for twenty-twenty-three?
I'll move it.
Moved by, was that Lisa? Motion by Lisa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in, oh, roll call vote, sorry.
Ms. Roosevelt?
Aye.
Ms. Depper?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gerke?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes, CISO. All right. Moving on, approve the location change for the January ninth, twenty-twenty-two organizational meeting from the Delano Public Schools District Office Conference Room to Delano High School Room two oh four, and that is due to immediate, I believe, right?
There was a conflict that I didn't foresee, and plus, we're gonna be in a bigger space than the conference room. Gives us a little bit more room. If anybody wants to attend, some other folks, uh, it provides that. So I think it's a better option for the board. Asking the board to do that because you actually last month officially approved the time, date, and location of the, uh, organizational meeting. So I'm just asking the board to change the location.
Do you have a motion to change the location?
Jenny, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jenny. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And last is approve the first read of policy seven twenty-two, public data and data subject request. Um, it's a new policy we discussed in work session. Do I have a motion to approve policy seven twenty-two?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Amy. Second by Cory. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.[1792.94]